For the Community Development Block Grant, after which we will have a City Services Committee meeting, then a regular session of City Council. Mayor Paul Wiel, can you tell us about our public hearing?
This is the second of two public hearings for the Community Development Block Grant, Small Cities Program, or CDBG program. It's a federally funded program administered by the State of Ohio. We're eligible about $106,000 for this year. We had a first meeting was in, I believe, April 5th, and taking input from the citizenry and also from our administration as well. Part of our project we're trying to do this year would be for 2010 is a Mill Street Sanitary Sewer Facilities Improvement. This is replacing sanitary sewer lines and doing street paving at that point. I think the price range we're looking at is somewhere about $300,000 and change, maybe $380,000 if I'm reading the notes right. So this is to replace some of the needed sewer, sanitary sewer that's down in that area. Again, this, the program money is essentially for reinvestment areas of low and moderate income, which covers several portions of the city, including Mill Street. This also was a spinoff of our Neighborhood Stabilization, I think it was Stabilization Grant, we tried about two years ago, which we did not receive, but we had committed some of this money to that progress process as a local match for Mill Street. And that's pretty much where we are, and I'll take public input at this time. We also have a sign-up sheet for anybody who wishes to sign up.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is this going to be an increase in capacity?
Is this what?
Will this include an increase in sewer capacity?
I don't know if it'll increase it that much. I think it's trying to take the kinks out, if I remember correctly. So I guess that would increase the capacity, but not, but not by enough. I don't think we are over capacity right now. I think it's just a condition of the sanitary sewers at this point.
Mayor, you mentioned that the CDBG money was $106,000 something.
Hundred and six, but some of that goes towards, go ahead.
And then you said that the cost of the project was about $300,000, so the difference will be?
We will probably roll two years' worth of the formula money into this process, so 2010, 2011. I'll come up with about two-thirds of it at that point. Does that?
That answered that question, yes. And so a further question, then, would there be some work done in 2011 and then follow-up work done in 2012?
Yes.
Is that the way to plan?
Actually, '10 and '11.
'11?
Those are two, yeah.
That work will actually happen this summer?
I don't think so. I think we're going to try, I think these grants usually run for 18 months, so the concept there is you'll have an overlap of a couple of months, so we can actually get the work done. I suspect it would be done during the summer, but probably, I suspect, not this summer.
Okay, thank you.
I'd have to look at the long-term plan. I didn't bring my little spreadsheet out there.
Well, yeah, summer of 2010 is already upon us, and it's pretty full already.
Yes, it is.
They're doing engineering, remember? We funded the engineering for us.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other comments for the mayor?
Okay, close it down, I guess. Thanks.
That concludes our public hearing. On to our City Services Committee. Committee Chair Nancy Bang.
We really finished early. I was surprised. I was worried about asking for this, but again, I would like to have a meeting of my committee at the end of the month, and there's something that we need to do before the end of the month. And so I'm asking for that, as well as Paul Mosley asked to include an easement, a water easement for the summit. But first, the question, as we talked a few months ago, and then Pat gave us, Pat Lang, the Law Director, gave us the okay, we have licenses for garbage hauling in commercial situations, and we had five licenses that were put in place, and they were put in place because we had a bunch of haulers who were being moved around, and we were afraid that the big guys would come in two decades ago and take over their business if we tried a competitive grant, a bidding operation for a contract. Well, two decades have passed, and in fact, almost all of the haulers that currently haul commercial are big hauls. They would go by anybody's definition, one local and two out of town. I'm not sure, two local, but they're really one. So it seems like it's time to, given all the changes that are happening on the terrain, to at least start to make an effort to get all of our garbage hauling in one big operation, or at least to get the commercial together in one spot. And, you know, so for a while, people were kind of wondering if this would happen, but I talked with Debbie, and she got the Law Director to suggest that we could say something like, "We intend to go to a contract on the first and ask Paula to write a letter." Is that what we were going to do? We have many permutations of this.
I thought we were going to do it.
We're just going to, by resolution? Okay. Which means it's an intention?
Yes.
One reading resolution?
Yes.
And so if something changes, and the world shifts on its axis, and we have a different set of circumstances, that we have an intention, which nobody can take to the bank, but we give the haulers at least some notice that we're thinking seriously about moving from easement plat and a description. And so I assume Debbie knows what to do, and I'll let Paul talk on this if he wants to, since we both had about as much input on this.
I've had very little input. I guess we're accepting some of the lines there? Is that what I'm hearing?
It says, let's see, it looks like full payment to damages on the land, together with the right to ingress and egress over the adjacent lands of the grantor. I told her I'd do it, but I didn't say I'd have to know it. An unexclusive easement with the right to erect, construct, install, and lay, and thereafter use, operate, inspect, repair, maintain, replace, and remove water lines, connections, meters, taps, pump house, and other associated water system components, over, across, and through, it doesn't say under, a portion of the land of the grantor. So the right of way, okay?
Okay. Remember, we've taken over the pump house there, I believe, so I assume other parts that we have taken over include probably the hydrants. I thought there were, there are hydrants, but maybe they're out now.
Did I?
I'll check on it, but...
The easement that's been, and other associated water system components would cover that, I think. It looks like there's a map with hydrants on it.
Okay, and what does the map look like?
It's really out of context. If you want to know the truth, there are no lines, but would you like to see it?
Now, hold on, just stay there.
Okay. Doesn't show any. I could fake them out and say they were on there, but they're not. There have to be hydrants over there. We know people living there.
Yeah, there are hydrants. The only reason why I know that, one of the hydrants got knocked over, and I was sure it was theirs to repair, and they did.
That's good.
Yeah.
Do you want him to put hydrants on that map?
No.
We have until the third week of June.
Put hydrants on the map?
Put hydrants on the map. Take a magic marker and put them on the map.
Okay.
But it won't be official, because it looks like it's already been filed.
Okay.
Okay, so whoever is the appropriate person for this, Debbie, if there are no objections, we should all be jumping for joy that we have a chance to do something on this summit. All right, I adjourn my meeting right now. We can talk.
So we wait till 7:30?
We'll be back in 15 minutes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. You'll have a set thing.
7:30 PM. We do have a forum with all members of council kind of present. Next item on our agenda is disposition of minutes. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes from the regular session? Regular session held May 17, and a special session held May 24.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes have been accepted. Communications? I am not really in, oh, okay.
I'm sorry. We're releasing this annexation for Peach Ridge.
Do I need to read all that?
It will sit in the council office.
Okay. We are in receipt from Julian Sikorsky, the Clerk of the Board of Commissioners, Athens County, a moosh, a annexation for the Peach Ridge property that we have discussed and heard several times. It will be in council chambers for the next 30 or 60 days. For anyone who wishes to comment? Okay. Are there other communications anyone would like to share? On to reports and communications from other elected officials. Mayor Wiel.
A couple items. One, of course, is that we're going to have a town hall meeting on the 29th of this month, June, at the community center. I believe it's 6:30. The other one is that there will be a June 22nd, in this room, at 7 o'clock, a meeting about the historic district that's been slated to get us in a historic registry for East State Street and Elmwood. There was a public hearing about a week ago, actually, I think last week, last Tuesday, at the East Elementary School, which felt that some people wanted more information, so they kind of rescheduled it. It's not really the formal public hearing, but it'll give a chance for other people to actually talk about what, and discuss what a historic district means, and what they can expect. Last thing is also, I think, the Service Safety Director mentions the fact that you may want to take a tour of the roundabout sometime, construction site, if you're interested as a council, as a group. We haven't arranged a time, but it's up to you guys, if you want to arrange a time, let her know in advance, because it's a hard hat area, and I'll have to fit you all with hard hats. So I guess it's an invitation at this point, and that's all.
Any of us take tours of it almost on a daily basis?
However, we can absolutely explain it to each other.
So we could explain it to others when they ask us questions.
I would be glad to do that.
I would like to do that.
And just to add to your information, I think we have a press release coming out from the city about the next stages of construction for the roundabout. The Phase Two to begin by June 14.
14, I believe, yes.
And that phase will involve closing Richland Avenue south of that intersection. And so people should be alert to that, and that's going to be finished in 28 days. So by mid-July, we'll have that finished, and the roundabout will be functional by that point.
By what date in July?
By mid-July, 28 days after June 14. So how many days that is?
Do that math.
So...
So somewhere mid-June, July.
Mid-July, and then the final construction, I believe, will be finished by, by September 3rd is the latest date. We'll have all the paving of the decks and things like that. So it's moving on quickly.
I'm amazed at how fast the bridge seems to be progressing, you know?
It is.
They have been working on weekends. They will not be working on graduation weekend.
Nor did they work the Memorial Day weekend, I noticed. That was kind of surprising.
So just follow the, go to the website, I think the actual news release is there. I got it this afternoon, but I didn't have a chance to print it out, or anything. That's all I have.
Other questions, comments for the mayor? City Auditor Kathy Hep, any report? And our Law Director needed to be out of the room for a few minutes. We'll give him an opportunity later on in the agenda. I do know that we do have a executive session at the end of tonight's session for land acquisition and pending litigation. And here he comes now. Law Director Patrick Lang, was there any type of report you wish to make at this time?
I'm sorry, did we start early tonight?
It was all about time, and since we had already...
Actually, I guess my, happy for my fortuitous timing here. I will, I do have a brief report. I just wanted to comment briefly on a case that has gotten a fair measure of coverage in the local media, that being the application for an adult-oriented business on Stimson Avenue. And of course, it's the city's policy not to comment on the details of pending litigation, although since this is a public opinion that's been reported on, I will just point out briefly what this opinion says, and as important as what it does not say. The Judge Ward's opinion does not order the Board of Zoning Appeals to issue a permit for this business, rather it refers the matter back to the Board of Zoning Appeals for rehearing. And even in the interim of that, as I was quoted as saying in the paper correctly, we do plan to pursue an appeal in this case, and today I filed a motion in the Court of Common Pleas of Athens County for a stay of Judge Ward's order pending that appeal. So I just wanted to give a brief update as to where that case stands. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I already mentioned that we do have an executive session at the end of tonight's session. Okay, on to ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 5810 is an ordinance declaring certain buses no longer needed for municipal Ordinance 5910 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 29 housing regulations to require carbon monoxide detectors in residential rental dwellings and rooming houses. Yes, Member Coon?
Mr. President, I believe we have someone here tonight, Mr. Rose, who would like to speak now. If you would just come up and state your, to the podium, and state your name and address, please.
Yes, my, my name is Charles Murray Rose. I'm a 22-year career employee of the Athens Post Office. I'm not here representing the Post Office, but as a private citizen with a concern for the health and well-being of my fellow Athenians. Council members, this is a public safety issue, the carbon monoxide ordinance, a no-brainer to me. If there is one vote against this ordinance, I would be shocked. All of this came about because of the failing crumbling infrastructure of the natural gas lines in our community, but it is a nationwide problem, not just a local one. Our country is self-destructing because of our failure to address updating our infrastructure. Before I go on any further, I would like to praise and to thank a local prominent businessman by the name of Alan McMillan. He owns Cranberry Row, a student rental company. Mr. McMillan cried before council that he has installed carbon monoxide detectors in all of his rental units, that heat with natural gas. I was quite impressed with his demeanor when he talked about one of his units that had a high carbon monoxide buildup and could have resulted in a tragedy. His facial expression showed his true sincere concerns for the renters involved in this situation. After watching his appearance before council, I mailed him a postcard stating how lucky Athens was to have such a prominent businessman who has such a caring for his community and fellow citizens. And Mr. McMillan, I salute you. Now, there are a few things I would like to bring up about why we have come to this point, about why this proposed ordinance should be a requirement. The Athens news media has failed several times to cover stories about serious carbon monoxide buildups in residences. During my last appearance in front of City Council, I spoke of two instances this past winter that were never covered, to my knowledge, by the local media. Mr. Sands knew these individuals' names involved and would have given the information to the news sources that were covering council that night. Did the media follow up on it? No. Anyway, since that time, I gained permission from the people involved, and will tell you publicly what happened. This past winter, Ruth Ballinger of 61 Elmwood Place had to be evacuated from her home because of a potentially lethal buildup of carbon monoxide emanating from her gas furnace in the basement. A young woman upstairs also had to leave until the problem was fixed. She had to stay with a friend, and Mrs. Ballinger had to stay with her daughter and son-in-law. Anyway, Mrs. Ballinger had just came home from the hospital after she had suffered a dislocated hip. Her caregiver was asked to retrieve a pan from the basement to bathe her feet. When the caregiver opened the basement door, she knew immediately that something was terribly wrong because of the foul odor that burst through the open door. Anyway, a tragedy was averted just because the caregiver went to the basement. I had smelled the foul odor for some time on my mail route, and knocked on Mrs. Ballinger's door for several days in a row, not knowing she was in the hospital at the time. The property owner has since installed a carbon monoxide detector, according to Mrs. Ballinger. The second potentially lethal carbon monoxide buildup was in the Fialco home at 11 Sunnyside Drive. The Fialcos had replaced the gas lines leading to their home. They had just put in a new gas furnace, and fortunately, in their case, they had a carbon monoxide detector that alerted them to the dangerous situation. This saved their lives because they wouldn't have even known there was a problem without the detector saying there was. Did the news media cover this? No, not to my knowledge. And third, and finally, on April 16th, 2009, I left a note at Jane and Mike Lyons residence at 306 East State Street, where I smelled a strong odor of natural gas. On the following day, Mrs. Lyons left a note to me. I have the note right here. Mrs. Lyons was dumbfounded that the news media didn't ask her for a personal interview to explain just how serious the leak was in her home. Jane Lyons told me that the gas workers would not even leave her home until after their monitoring devices showed it was safe for her and her family to stay there. Did the local media interview her about her brush with a tragedy? No. The local news media, I feel, shoulders the blame for not following up on the gas leaks and the carbon monoxide buildups, and how it affected people's lives in this community. They aided the Columbia Gas spokesman, Ken Stamman, to say in the May 14th, 2009 issue of OU Post, "We don't think there's a safety issue there in Athens. We're sensitive to the concerns, but it's not a hazard." Well, here's the note that Mrs. Lyons left for me, the day that her house was near, ready to explode. Says, "To the mail carrier, if you are the person who left the note on my package yesterday, I would like to personally thank you. I called the gas company, and we had an extremely serious gas leak. If you could knock on the door, I would really like to thank you personally." All I can say is, I have a degree in journalism, even though I ended up choosing as a career as a mailman. The last time I remember, 40 years ago, from my journalistic training, an elderly woman and a graduate student that had to be evacuated from their homes because of a potentially lethal buildup of carbon monoxide in their residence is news. A family that was saved by having a carbon monoxide detector in their home, warning them of danger, is news. Following up with interviewing a family who had just been told that their house would have exploded had they not contacted the gas company, when they did, is news. The last situation is especially troubling because of the discrepancy between the gas company spokesman, Ken Stamman, saying that it's not a hazard, to what the workers who were on the scene at the Jane Lyons home at 306 East State Street. Finally, council members, I don't think it takes a genius to know it's the right thing to do to pass this ordinance, and the sooner the better, before any future potential tragedy could happen. Apparently, the gas company thinks something should be done, or they wouldn't have initiated the Riser Safety Program that's going on in some of the Athens neighborhoods right now.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. I might mention that next week, we are having a carbon monoxide demonstration, so if you would like to bring your carbon monoxide detectors to the Safety Committee meeting next week, that would be fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Coon. Other comments? Ordinance 6010 is an ordinance to rezone property on court and state streets from B3 to B2D. On to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 6110 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 13, General Offenses, Chapter 1304, Offenses Against Public Peace, Section 130410, Unnecessary Noise. Member Coon?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you all know, this ordinance has been discussed many times in committee, and there have been numerous meetings of the Ad-Hoc Committee. At the last Safety Committee meeting, it was indicated that some clarification was needed regarding complaints. It's my understanding, and I have spoken with Chief Mayor about this, that under the current noise ordinance, before 10 o'clock or before midnight, depending on the day, you can call in with a complaint. This isn't a criminal complaint, you're just calling and complaining, and you do need to leave your name and indicate where the noise is coming from. You don't have to go into court, but you might be subpoenaed in, and if you are, then of course you do have to go into court. And after 10:00 PM or midnight, depending on the day, you can call in with a complaint anonymously regarding amplified sound. Did I get that right, Chief Mayor? Could you explain to us how the new noise ordinance would be different regarding those complaints?
I want it to make some of the violations prima facie violations, therefore, the person could just, you know, call in, give the information, and we could locate that sound. You don't have to identify the specific location of it. If it's in the general area where they're complaining about, and we locate a sound that violates the law, we can take enforcement action on it. That's one of the big key differences there.
And I think it's 50 feet from the property line, or, let me see, how is that?
It's 50 feet from the sound.
From the sound.
Line, whichever is further.
Farther, mm-hmm, okay.
And it was talked about in the meeting, said, "What about if there's an apartment next door?" And everybody seemed to have the same opinion that if you could hear it in the apartment next door, you could probably go in the hallway and hear it down the hallway 50 feet from the noise source.
Okay.
Everybody's thinking on that, 50 foot issue.
Are there any questions for Chief Mayor?
Thanks for coming tonight, Chief.
We do, we do have a train track that still goes through town, and there are people that, I don't know if there's currently any now, right now, but there have been vast people that collect steam engines and that to run Kali P's or whatever they might be. We even had some down at the Fall Festival, down at the fairgrounds, steam equipment at times. So there are those types of things still in the community that occasionally are inside the city.
There was some question about the, the train language in the, in the ordinance. Are there any other? Member Sands?
The chief just used the term, and I read it several times in the proposed ordinance. What exactly does prima facie mean? How do you pronounce it?
Why don't we let the lawyer to give you the legal definition?
Excuse me? On its face is the translation, basically what it means is that it is, the existence of a fact is proof of that fact, so that makes it, so the fact that a certain condition exists is evidence of the fact.
Okay.
I'm sorry. That's a very legal definition, I know.
One of the best examples for these ordinance would probably be in the case of a band in a residential area. We get a call about a band playing in the residential area, we go there, and it's there. It being there, playing, is against the law. So once we get a complaint, that's all it takes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Chief Mayor, thank you so much for coming tonight and clarifying that. However, due to the fact that many students are out of town during the summer, and there has been a lot of controversy about passing this during the summer when most of the students are gone, at this time, I move to table this ordinance until September.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We shouldn't have a second to table. Discussion on tabling only, for the reasons that you stated.
Yes, for the reasons that I stated, and I, if I may, I would like to add that I hope everybody will take advantage of this opportunity. This is ample time to review this ordinance, and so that we'll be ready in September when it's time to deal with this again.
Is there further discussion on tabling ordinance 60? I'm sorry, ordinance 61. All those in favor of tabling the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been tabled. I'm sorry, 61. Ordinance 6210, an ordinance to increase the city income tax by 10 hundreds percent, .10 percent per annum for the period of 10 years, authorizing a question on the increase to be placed on the ballot at the next general election to be held on November 2nd, 2010, and declaring an emergency. Member Nysley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We discussed this at our meeting last week, the transportation, and what this is, is the, an ordinance that would place on the ballot a .1% income tax, and this would have a, be enacted for 10 years. It would have a one-year overlap. The current income tax is set to expire on December 31st, 2011. And this has been, the earlier discussion we had involved .12%, you might recall, and based on information that the Law Director obtained from the Secretary of State, it's been recommended, rather than having two ballot issues, one for .1, another one for .02, that we move forward with just this one at this point for .1.
Other comments? Now we move on to a resolution for first reading. Resolution of 610 is a resolution to place the issue of increasing the city... Resolution 0610 is a resolution to place the issue of increasing the city income tax by 10 hundredths percent, .10 per annum, for a period of 10 years, beginning January 1, 2011, on the ballot at the next general election on November 2nd, 2010, directing the Board of Elections of Athens County to conduct the election, and declaring an emergency. Again, Member Nysley?
Thank you, Mr. President. This resolution is the, what places, what enables us to put this on the ballot in the fall election.
Are there other comments on Resolution 06? Mayor Wile?
Just a clerical question. I see in Section 2, it says, "Said ordinance 0 blank blank 10 shall provide increase." Is that after the ballot, or is that represent the 026?
Yeah, I can put that in now.
What?
I can put that in now. We know what ordinance it is.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's what I was wondering. Is it, is it referencing the 62, or is it referencing some future? That's all I wanted to know.
The clerk will be adding that right directly. Member Sands?
I was just going to ask Member Nysley to take a moment and talk about the activities that we would hope would be funded by this additional money.
Correct. We do, as we mentioned at our earlier committee meeting, have several large projects that are needed for street rehabilitation that are coming up in the next few years. The city has four bridges, which the city council members and city administration reviewed, or viewed with the Department of Public Works Director this spring. Several of those are in need of repair, and these will be coming up in the next few years. So, this, along with our regular street rehabilitation repairs that need to be made, are the kinds of things that this money will go towards.
And would this not also include some work on our new plan for pedestrian and bicycle transportation?
At this point, I'm not sure that we will have additional monies directed towards that. This is strictly for street rehabilitation. So, for a while, for the bike plan, we may be looking for other sources of revenue, and we'll work with the city administration on how to, to see if there is some.
So, this is just?
Street rehabilitation.
Which includes bridges?
Correct.
Other comments?
Paving and potholes and?
Yes.
And maintenance and so forth.
Do you think any of that needs to? Mayor Wile?
If you remember, and I didn't attend the last street tour with you guys, normally, we do about one-third of the streets, we get a list of all of the PCR ratings, pavement, concrete ratings, or whatever they are. I think PCR, I think it's something different. And about a third of them is what we, it's usually what we're able to cover any given year in terms of the needs of the streets. So, we're always a little bit behind. We have a couple, you know, we do this double bump this next year, but it would be nice to try addressing Grosvenor. We do have bridges that are coming across. The next one, I think that's going to be the major one, it'll be the one over on Richland by the Oxbow, near the student center. That one, if you know, is circa 1933. We are actually in the queue for getting some monies for that from ODOT, but that's, but we always have to have a certain local match and design engineer that goes at that place. If we want to try, again, this is no different than the rollover from the previous year, so there hasn't, there won't probably not be that much difference in terms of income change. If we want to address sidewalks and bike lanes, eventually, one thing to consider is possibly in 2011, is to put on the ballot the 02, the .02. There's a good reason for doing that. That would actually give you a good expression of the will of people in terms of what they want, in terms of bike lanes and sidewalks, and pedestrian, implementing our pedestrian plan. And that's way down the line, I know, but the aspect is that this is really going to roll over what we have. We have lots of projects we can do. The next question is whether we have the resources.
Other comments? Thank you, Mayor. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 0610?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It was just for first reading.
Oh, I thought it was a one-reading resolution. I misread that myself. Excuse me. Onto announcements and other business. Committee meetings next time? Yes.
The council personnel has several issues we need to talk about.
Next week.
Next week.
Member Gosden?
I will need a committee meeting as well. I believe Bob Wykenberg, County Planner, will be here to discuss the natural hazard mitigation plan that is being developed right now.
Very good.
Any others? Safety?
Carbon monoxide demonstration.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Very good. Opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that we did not cover on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone wishing to speak for council? Seeing none, and seeing that item number 10 on our agenda is an executive session to discuss land acquisition and pending litigation, I would need a motion to move in and a roll call, and a roll call vote. Who all do we need there? The mayor? The auditor?
Pat Lang?
The law director? Well, I think that's a given. And all members of council? Should we be mean to the clerk and make her stay tuned? Just for the heck of it? No? Okay. Motion?
Aye. Motion. To partake in the executive session?
Partake in an executive session like that?
Thanks.
Do we have a second partaking? Okay. Motion and a second. Member Butler?
Aye.
Dean? Paul? Sands? Gosden?
Aye.
Okay. I don't see a lot of press tonight. How much time do you really need to ask questions? None?
Hey, we can go right into it.
Then we can go right into it. Thank you all for attending. See you next week.